Alright, let's call the City of Milton Common Council meeting to order Tuesday, November nineteenth, six P M. And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting notice was posted at Milton Pigley Wiggly hometown Ace Hardware in Milton City Hall.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? We have an agenda. Pledge of Allegiance. Public comments. We'll have our fire chief do his report under public comments. Since he has another meeting to go to. So you can go right now.
I do appreciate that because I want to make sure I leave Milton under the speed limit instead of twenty miles over. Everybody has a copy. Members in the audience are on the back table if you want one. This represents through October. The fun part when you get near the end of the year is you now have ten, eleven months worth of data. So you can kind of get a better feel for how things are really going. Through the end of October, we are thirteen point eight percent in call via nine one one call volume over last year. So if you've heard a lot more sirens than you think you should, the answer is you're right. You are. Good news is we're doing really well with that. City of Milton fifty calls, nine one one calls during the month. Pretty average in the response time range. So nothing really stands out there. Fire inspection activity, the one thing that I've really been pointing out to all of our municipalities, Chief Parker, Division Chief Jeremy Parker, coordinates all of our fire prevention week activity. We had fifteen events at our schools with over nine hundred contacts with individuals participating. So just a fun time of year and a lot of, a lot of good things come out of that. So we're really excited about that. Staffing, we're holding our own budgets, as I say every month. It is a west problem, not an east problem. So you guys are absolutely fine. Nothing there. We did have a pretty significant house fire in the town of Fulton. I'll just comment with some discretion. The occupant was injured. But all of those lessons you learned in high school about not plugging heating devices into extension cords into power blocks. You may want to take note of that. And also working smoke detector would have probably, well, it would have, it would have saved the individual with, prevented the injuries. Good news is, and we stayed closely in contact with him, he did receive some burns and some other injuries. He's doing well. And his friends are helping him try to get back on his feet. So. Paul, Teresa, the mayor are well aware, we're working through the two thousand twenty-five budget. I do want to publicly thank Mark Schrader, who represents us as well as you, along with Bill Morgan. D O R was not as friendly to us this year as we would have liked in terms of some rulings. But Mark and the attorneys did a really, really good job trying to represent us. So we've gotten through that. There is a special meeting tomorrow night to approve a modified budget. Again, it has no impact on the east. Your numbers do not change. So Kelsey, don't panic. But that's been kind of an interesting journey. I think that's about it. Any questions? If not, thank you very much for the courtesy of letting me get on and get off. And you guys have a very happy, enjoyable Thanksgiving. Take care.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Okay. Mayoral proclamation, Small Business Saturday. Whereas the government of Milton, Wisconsin celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are thirty-three million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent ninety-nine point seven percent of firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for sixty-two point seven percent of net new jobs created since nineteen ninety-five. And small businesses employ forty-six point four percent of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas sixty-eight cents of every dollar spent at a small business in the United States stays in the local community. And every dollar spent at small businesses creates an additional forty-eight cents in local business activity as a result of employees and local businesses purchasing local goods and services. And whereas Milton, Wisconsin supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Anissa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, do hereby proclaim November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four as Small Business Saturday. And urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
There's a motion in the second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries discussion and possible action regarding request for a special event permit for block party on Romar Drive and Agnew Drive. Okay, first and last name and address, please.
Brett Bertingham. It's one six seven Romar Drive, Milton. We decided, Mary Ann and I decided to throw a block party for our neighbors. So everybody gets to know each other. We've wanted to do this for the last three years, but we finally put our foot down and said, okay, we're gonna do it this year. It's gonna be held on November twenty-third. The, I have it considered as, you know, bring a dish to pass, bring your favorite dish to pass and B Y O. Bring your own beverages. I'm here, the chief asked me to come in to explain that I will not be serving nobody. They will be bringing their own alcohol. They are responsible for their own children. I am not going to be responsible for their children. Mary Ann and I, we will have, obviously her son and probably my son will be there, which is the under the age. Will not consume no alcohol from us. The reason I am here is, was wondering if it's okay if neighbors mingle beyond, you know, with each other on the block and would be able to, you know, walk down the street with an open container of beer or their favorite drink or whatever it is.
Street that goes out into Crescent. And we also asked if we could get some barrels like at the end of each one of those streets so that it would block off. So we invited the people on Crescent as well, so that whole little neighborhood. And we just asked if we could like block there, if people were walking from house to house. Technically, we kind of assumed it would kind of stay on the corner of Omar because that's where all the food was gonna be. So that was our.
My biggest concern is there's been new neighbors that move in with little ones. I would say, you know, middle school, grade school. I just don't want people to come flying through. You know, if the kids are out playing in the street and stuff like that. Other than that, that's about all I have on it. And yeah, we were asking, I did fill out everything. Jenny was very, very helpful on it and stuff. And I did ask if the Public Works could drop off some barrels or barricade. And if, we'll make it to where if neighbors need to leave, they'll be able to leave either on the side of, one side of Romar or on the other side of Romar. I guess the biggest thing is the alcohol. The alcohol.
The, what does the ordinance say about alcohol?
So it cannot be consumed on city streets. So the issue, my concern with the block party was if they're crossing from house to house or mingling from, let's say they start over there at one six seven Romar and then move to another. There is no exception with the special event application packet or within the ordinance itself for a special event. So that's why I encouraged Brett to bring the matter before council, since this is a special thing for the neighborhood that they're trying to start up. I didn't feel comfortable with it just because I, I told him if the permit was approved, which I initially approved, but I warned him that since he is the applicant, he's also responsible then if there is an issue in the neighborhood or a violation of the ordinance. So then that's why he's here tonight to request approval to bypass the ordinance restriction for alcohol consumption or open containers on city streets.
And so I just have a question you might not be able to answer. When we have community days and they've had wine, it has been, how does, how has that worked? Jenny, do you know?
I do.
Okay.
Yeah, we actually set up a, what do you call those things that go around it? A fence, a snow fence, thank you. We set up a snow fence around an area and there was a dedicated seating and area in front of it. But that's when we got an alcohol or a wine beer permit. So we actually were allowed to do that. But what's the, I'm just curious on the, what's the difference if somebody just goes from one neighbor to another and brings a beer with them? I mean, like, I walk to my neighbors and I might have a drink in my hand. I didn't know I wasn't allowed.
I think every week there's something new that I'm learning about council.
Well, that was our thing. Cause it's like, if you just walk across the street to your neighbors, technically that's, you know, it's not, we're not supposed to be doing that. And so, not that we do it every weekend, but now you have new people.
We don't require confessions to come to council. We don't, we don't. Chief?
It's just we're meeting new people. And when you're telling them that, you know, they can bring a beverage, if they're gonna bring a cooler or they're gonna, you know, I mean, who's to say that they don't walk down the street with? And we just wanna, we want this to be a safe, fun thing that we can continue to do. I've, I've lived there for eleven, twelve years. I've always wanted to do it. I mean, I'm on that dead end Agnew Street and I would love to just block that off. But you still are gonna have people walking to their houses, right? So that's the issue. Like, we don't want to be responsible for that, but we want them, like, you know, we want it to, we.
I just want everybody to be safe.
Yeah.
You know, and I, I tried to get a porter John, but that didn't work out. So there'll be people just walking to their houses to go to the restroom. I mean, I just don't want our friends, neighbors, if chief decides to drive down there and see Bob walking across the street with a beer.
I didn't get invited. The block is gonna be closed, so I can't go through there, I guess. I guess I, I have no issue with there being a block party. I think it's a great idea. The only concern is if people start consuming too much, start going to the roadway and if all of a sudden a vehicle does come through the block, because it's not gonna be a complete closure with hard barricades there, you know, the type threes that we utilize for all the parades. If not the sawhorse ones, I would assume too, probably for something more low key like this and, and a very less traveled residential area. So I thought to throw the ball to council to determine if this is something that's worth an exception. Or if we have Brett pass on to the neighbors that it's gonna be a restrictive thing where if alcohol is consumed, it's in your yard or it's at their property. If you have to go back to your house, drop the drinks by your cooler and then come back and grab them. So long as some kids aren't grabbing loose cocktails.
And can we assume that everyone, in addition to Romar, going down Agnew or Dickoff, has been notified?
Yes, everybody got a flyer.
He actually went door to door, introduced himself.
So regardless of whether they're interested in attending, they know about.
Yeah, they, they all know about it. If they show up, that's great. If they don't.
I actually do a lot of those people's hair on it. It's kind of like a, you know, kind of like a Friendsgiving type thing as well, but we just want to make sure that it's.
I mean, if you guys want to see the flyer, I can bring her up.
No, I mean, no, I just trust, I, I just wanted to make sure they're notified of it. So.
So we started like on Crescent where the Stindles live on that end. And you gave it to those people on the corner, right?
Yes.
And then we went all the way down, he went all the way down Crescent and then down Romar and hit, you know, that whole corner. We know a lot of those people in that corner and I know a few on the other. But that's, you know, like, there's a whole corner down there. We don't even know.
I went, yeah, Dickoff, I, I know nobody down there. I even walked down there, introduced myself, handed everybody, everybody got a flyer.
Chief, could they put up a snow fence? If they, if they really wanted to be safe or make this legit?
It's not a hard closure, really, on the block. And there's not gonna be law enforcement to help ensure that somebody's not gonna drive through, plow through a snow fence. So I'd be hesitant to have a snow fence established on the roadway. If it was in a yard or across two properties, that they'd just be up to the homeowners then to establish something like that.
I live over there, walk by there all the time. And I can tell you from personal experience, that's the road you typically live on or know somebody on. You don't just go down that street. You have to be going, be going there for a purpose. It's not a through road. So if I'm worried about the safety of the people there, me personally, I, I don't know that I see it as something as big a concern. I live on Sunset, people use it as a cut through and, and I would be more concerned on my street than I would on that street because of the way it's set up. You don't, just drive through that neighborhood.
We just have tons of Amazon drivers that come down. That's it.
Yeah.
Right. Well, half of the time they're coming my own.
Well, yeah, that's, I'm just, that's the point. That's the point. Right. And it's, you can see the time. I mean.
Do we have like a, a noise ordinance though that's like eleven, ten?
Ten P M.
Are you having a DJ or a?
I can have a band if you want.
I was just checking. I didn't.
No, just, just the radio, just my radio.
No, I'm just hoping that it's like nice, you know.
Forty-one degrees.
We'll probably be in my garage, you know, garage area or.
And what it's gonna come down to, I don't know how many you guys know that, there's a lot of, I don't want to discriminate, but there's a lot of older people that live on that block. So they're gonna be home.
A lot of wise.
Wiser people, yes. A lot of wiser people that'll be home by eight o'clock, seven o'clock.
They'll understand the importance of being home at an earlier time, correct?
Yes, yes, yes. And I don't plan on it going any, probably any longer than, I put twelve, but I don't see it going to twelve. Any, yeah, anybody else that, anybody else that hangs around, they'll probably end up in our garage. Well, she'll probably be in bed, but I'll be up.
Typically, these special event permits, including alcohol, the city does require some sort of insurance policy to cover the city if they're being, if they are drinking in our streets. Have you looked into a, an insurance policy for this?
No, sir.
I have a separate one. I have, I also have.
Isn't, isn't that required if they're going to be selling alcohol?
It's actually in the ordinance that if it's using any city services, so if the barricades are up, that's what the insurance is for under special event permit too. There is also insurance for.
Can you guys drag your garbage cans over there and replace the cones?
I mean, I got, I got caution, I'm a good construction worker. I got caution tape. I mean, I can put garbage cans out there with caution tape.
And the council can waive that insurance requirement if they choose to. It's, it's similar to the community days when they were discussing having liquor in the park where it, our ordinance didn't allow it in North Grid Ridge, except for the community house. But the council chose to approve that and, and separate from what our current ordinance says.
How many people do you anticipate? Just a guess.
Forty. Maybe.
If you have them coming and going all day long, maybe.
Yeah.
But I don't.
I don't see, I don't see forty people, I don't see forty people. I see a lot of people being there earlier during the day than I do after. You know, because it's supposed to be a high of forty-one as soon as the sun goes down. It'll be thirty-two and they'll be in their house. And yes, I have to go get a permit from the fire chief for my, because I will have a fire pit in my driveway.
Just don't confess to anything.
Any more confessions, Sarah?
You're learning them all the night, Sarah.
So I guess my question is, without any more confessions, is, so we want the community to, I mean, it's to interact, right? These are the parties that, I mean, we want to have. So how do we do it safely and responsibly without the city having any responsibility or backlash, right? So we're not gonna drop off any, you, are you taking that back?
If it's okay for me to put caution tape and still leave, you know, a car length to get through, I'll be more than happy to do that. And then Mr. Langer won't have to get his guys over there to drop off barricades or anything. I'll just do it all. Just use garbage cans.
Put a sign up that's.
I can make signs too.
No entrance, private block party for residents only or something.
Chief, does that, does that work, chief? Yeah. I guess, I mean, there's nothing restricting traffic to go down there though. So if there's somebody that wants to drive through, we're not officially closing the road. So it still has to be passable.
Yeah.
Yep.
I guess the only reason.
If we do close down the road, the city can still, the city council still can waive the insurance requirement. I'd much rather see that road closed with our barricades and some caution tape put up. I think that's safer for everyone in the community, both driving and people beyond those barricades. So if council is looking to go in this direction, I would recommend allowing it and wa, and waiving the insurance.
Come get the barricades.
No, you don't have to do that because our attorney was shaking his head.
I think the question is all the other details prior to the road being closed.
Details.
Well, like insurance, if the council's gonna allow this to happen, all the stuff that's been discussed prior to this, I agree with Paul, I don't think caution tapes is satisfactory mechanism to close a road, especially for a planned event that's known. You know, if it's an emergency situation, that's all you have, sure, maybe, but.
Well, I mean, is there a way to close a smaller, like, area of the road? And just kind of keep it in that area?
I mean, if you guys would let us put barricades on Agnew, then nobody can get down Agnew. That's only from.
There's only three people, two people that live on Agnew.
Yeah.
So it's not like, you're still gonna have people that are walking most likely down the street.
That's what I'm worried about. I'm worrying about, you know, Bob comes over and, you know, consumes his, all of his beer he brought. And now he's gotta walk a half a block to get home and then somebody comes flying through there. That's the only thing.
I want the roads closed. I'm just trying to.
Normally have, yeah. We, like you said, we don't have, I'm home all day long. I have a salon in, in my, you guys approved, you know, Studio FX is there on that corner. And I am, I see who's coming and going. And we don't have that. And we have had a couple people that have actually, you know, asked and neighborhood watch here is like, slow down, you know, telling them. We did have a new family move in. This was one of the reasons why I said to Brett, like, we really need to get that block party going. When they moved in, they moved, they're from Milton, they were living in Middleton. They came down and they were, and she was like, we, I took cookies and whatever. Oh my God, this is so nice. We've been hoping that we had nice neighbors. And I said, one of these days I'm gonna have a block party. And she goes, oh, fofo. And, and they were so excited. And they have two little kids, two kids, and then there's two other kids across from me. It's so nice to hear the kids in the neighborhood. But only us know each other. And that was like the whole idea of it. I guess just making, you know, that.
I'm more worried about the kids than the grownups. Cause there's, I mean, the, the kids, they'll be running in, across the street. You know, kids running and playing. I mean, they do it now and it scares me.
So why can't we just block the, completely block the road off?
We, I think we can block the road off from Romar and Crescent on both, both east or north and south ends. I mean, the type threes, they're light enough that a person can get out of their vehicle and move them if they needed to. But then they're reflective, so you have that benefit versus just trash cans and crime scene tape or whatever you got. So I think that would, it's not that difficult. We're talking probably six type three barricades for both, for, you know, total for each end, for both ends.
But I don't think you're gonna want to do a full closure because people are gonna need to be able to get in and out to get to their homes too, right?
Well, can't, like you said, can't somebody just get up and move it and then, I guess.
I mean, when we put up a barricade, the expectation is that the public doesn't move it. Or if, you know, we, like, when we leave barricades out for community days, you know, then the volunteers are installing them potentially. Or civil war days, you know, we'll put them out the day before.
But you have people that are coming in that don't, I mean, the, these are people that know that this is our area and that we were gonna have that party and we're blocking it off to be safe. I don't think that anybody would be upset about having to move a barricade to get out. I mean, that, that's what we had to do to have it. You know what I mean?
Well, I guess if we're concerned about completely blocking it, fine, but at least have some there so that it acts as a caution for people that knowing when they turn on there, that there's an event happening and that they need to at least put their phone down and pay attention to where they're driving. Okay, at least it advises them that there is an event taking place. And I think we're, we're getting too wrapped around the axle on some of these things and just reasonably, get some barricades. So it does have to block off the whole thing so people can get by, but at least advises people when they're turning down there that, hey, there's something happening. You need to pay a little bit more attention.
Not sure what we're proving is actually the barricade. It's more the alcohol part and the insurance part, is what I think that more of the discussion said.
About the barricades.
Well, I talked about the barricades. Another concern though, the barricades is like what Mark said, their intent is not to be moved. Especially if the city does waive liability and let's say a homeowner exits or enters, they now move this barricade, falls onto their vehicle, it falls onto them. They might be light, but there are still aluminum pieces to it that have some potential for sharp edges on them. So that's my other concern with a full closure where we're requiring residents to move barricades though on top of it. Which we don't want to have. And I don't think it's fair for a block party attendee to monitor both ends and act as gatekeeper for the event either.
Well, what if we, like, went around with a letter that said, this is the intent of alcohol during this little block party, if you're going to bring alcohol, you know, I mean, what if we gave them the disclosure of what you're telling us at, at that time? And, and then they know. So it's not like they're going into a blind.
Well, I think we still have two issues though with how we're gonna try to accommodate the party with safety with the road closure or partial closure. And then the alcohol consumption in open containers. So I don't know if we, if council wants to make a move on either or. I think two barricades on each end would be sufficient. If they're put up by one person, that's still enough. That's still enough for people to know that the road's closed, just like it is for parades, and that there's still ample room for a vehicle to get through. That way, the community members don't have to mess with the barricades, aside from the initial setup, and then the takedown at the end of the party.
I would like to make a motion to approve the special event permit, waive the, um, alcohol restrictions, and also waive the insurance for this one.
Second.
There's a motion and a second.
I just have a question. So are Public Works putting the barricades out Friday during working hours? Or are we expected to come in and set those up and take them down, PD come up and s- or set them up and take them down before and after the event?
I can, if you drop them off Friday, I can put them up Saturday and take them down Saturday night for yous.
Not till one, so you don't want to block off.
Yeah, it's not till one. I'm not, I don't want to block off, you know, the street, the whole street all day.
And on both ends of those streets, I am friends with the Stein double, so I don't think that would be a problem if they got dropped off. You know, I'll ask Kenny and Dawn, can we just put them here by your yard and then I'll put them here, and if you just drop them there, we can just put them out at.
And then you, and then you guys, and then Monday, we'll, you can pick them up Monday.
Any other questions or comments or discussion? Bring, bring your handcuffs next time. Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries.
All right, thank you guys very much. I'll be leaving by eight, though.
You'll be going by four.
Discussion and possible action regarding Resolution two thousand and twenty-four dash twenty-one, resolution to adopt the two thousand and twenty-five budget.
All right, tonight in front of you is Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty twenty-one for the two thousand and twenty-five budget. There has not been any changes since our last meeting in the budget. Um, tonight, we are looking at a property tax levy of three million, six hundred ninety-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars, which is a point five four percent increase from two thousand and twenty-four, and a total general fund budget for two thousand and twenty-five of five million, eight hundred, ten thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars, which is a three point six eight percent increase from two thousand and twenty-four. Um, both of these, or the budget meets the expenditure restraint and it also stays within our levy limits. Um, as of today, I don't have a full mill rate to give you as we don't have the state school credit yet, that usually comes out by the twentieth. But I can tell you the city of Milton piece of the mill rate will be six dollars and fifty-eight cents compared to last year of eight dollars and sixty-nine cents. So it'll be a reduction per thousand of two dollars and twelve dollar, two dollars and twelve cents as stated tonight.
Questions?
That's our introduction.
Um, due in part to the revaluation that was done through the city, too.
Questions or comments?
I'd make a motion to approve the budget as it's written.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adopt the budget as presented. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? We have a budget.
Thank you. And as soon as I know the total mill rate for all, um, combined together, I'll send out an email so everyone is aware of the total mill rate.
And discussion and possible action on agreement with the Community Foundation of Southern Wisconsin to manage the Milton Indoor Tennis and Pickleball Capital Campaign.
Um, as directed by council, I've been working with the Community Foundation of Southern Wisconsin. They have prepared an agreement with the city of Milton to manage the Milton Indoor Tennis and Pickleball Capital Campaign. Uh, the Greater Rock County Tennis and Pickleball Foundation, uh, the group of, uh, people that were here presenting on tennis in the past have organized a foundation. Um, they're interested in raising the funds to build a four or five court facility in the city of Milton. They're interested in utilizing the Community Foundation of Southern Wisconsin to manage the funds and support their fundraising efforts. In order for these funds to go to the city to build the indoor courts, an agreement between the Community Foundation of Southern Wisconsin, the city needs to occur. The purpose of this fund is to receive and accept donations in support of development of tennis courts in the city of Milton by the city of Milton, which shall upon completion be operated and maintained for benefit of citizens of Southern Wisconsin and visitors. There are three plan sets for different funding levels of fundraising. Uh, Plan A is a complete five, uh, proposed five tennis court hard structure facility, thirty-five thousand square foot with a twenty-eight thousand uh, square foot office and locker room and three months operating fund. That full capital campaign goal is five million, nine hundred thou- uh, nine hundred thousand. Plan B is to complete proposed four tennis court hard structure facility at twenty-eight thousand square feet with a twenty-eight thou- uh, excuse me, twenty-eight thousand square feet with a twenty-eight hundred square foot office locker room and three months operating fund. That full capital campaign goal is four point eight million. And the third plan, Plan C, is unable to complete above Plans A or B, a permanent fund will be established under the CFSW to support projects and programs in any Rock County Parks Recreation Department, Rock County municipalities, and nonprofit organizations for support of tennis and pickleball spaces and/or instruction. Uh, this is pretty much the fail-safe, um, so people know where their money's going if it's donated and they do not hit their goals. Um, for the fiscal impact, there is no initial cost to the city. Uh, the foundation will be charging five percent of funds raised. That is their typical uh, maintenance agreement, um, to manage the fund and to assist in those fundraising capabilities. Uh, administration recommends a motion to approve the agreement with the Community Foundation of Southern Wisconsin to begin the Milton Indoor Tennis and Pickleball Facility Capital Campaign. Uh, this proposal was also reviewed by the Parks Commission, and they forwarded a positive recommendation to council to approve this.
I have a question. Has anyone seen, they talked about, and I brought this up the last time when they did their presentation, they have this in Lake Geneva, I believe?
They have a, uh, for-profit facility in Lake Geneva.
And they were saying that this would support itself. This, and has, and I asked about the financials then for that, to see it. Has, have you, or is there anyone seeing their financials from that to show, I'm, I'm all about believing, but verifying.
I have seen projections that would support, uh, this facility.
Okay, and you're comfortable with those? If this, because if this, when the city gets this, I'm concerned about if it's not, because I don't, you, you can feel what I know about pickleball and tennis in, in a thimble. Uh, so I don't know that it'll go. And then are we wrapping an anchor around the neck of the city? We have a, we're in a great financial situation right now. And I'd like to see it continue. I, I'm very impressed by this city and how it manages. And I'm concerned, you know, when the city gets it, and everybody's saying, well, it's going to make money and it's going to be self-supporting. How do I know that? You know what I'm saying? Are, are, how sure are, are we of that?
I'm co- I'm, I'm comfortable if they raise the requisite funds that, uh, this would be a self-supporting facility. Um, again, uh, the people showing me these numbers operate a facility, like for-profit facility, and that's all he does, is he lives off this. And so I, I do believe this is, uh, possible.
All right.
Yeah, I think Paul makes a really good point. Um, I think, uh, the market's going to reveal itself in the fundraising effort. Uh, if people come forward with, uh, what is it, close to five million dollars for, uh, this project, then they got skin in the game. And I think that's going to be a likely sign that it will, you know, continue. If not, the fallback's not a bad thing. Um, you know, the, the fail-safe in terms of whatever dollars go in being available for parks and recreation uh, in, in Rock County, uh, it works for me.
I will note the original agreement was just Rock County's parks and recreation, and I made sure municipalities had access to those funds.
Thank you. Um, are there any other questions or comments or discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with the Community Foundation of Southern Wisconsin to begin the Milton Indoor Tennis and Pickleball Facility Capital Campaign.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding a commercial facade grant application from Leo Nardini located at seven forty East St. Mary's Street.
Leo Nardini applied for a facade grant for the property at seven forty, uh, East St. Mary's Street. It's Cafe Twenty-Six, um, where Cafe Twenty-Six is currently located. Uh, the Community Development Authority reviewed the application on October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, requested an itemized invoice for the project and a second contractor's estimate. Uh, Leo Nardini contracted with ABN, uh, General Construction to redesign the building's facade, which includes installing new LP smart siding, along with painting and priming for a finished appearance. Uh, total project cost is twenty-eight thousand, seven twenty-one, twenty-five, and the grant funding request is ten thousand dollars. Uh, to meet the CDA's request, the applicant provided a second contractor estimate from RJ Construction, which was received September twenty twenty-four, and totaled twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty. Uh, ABN General Construction also submitted an itemized invoice detailing the work that has been completed. Uh, for fiscal impact, the expense of ten thousand dollars would be incurred by TID number ten. And the city administration recommends approval of facade grant for Leo Nardini in the amount of ten thousand dollars.
I'll move approval of the facade grant.
There's a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding a commercial facade grant application from the Beverage Mart located at one thirty-six Merchant Row.
The beverage, Beverage Mart proposes to remove and replace their current auditing. The total project proposal is five thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents, and the request from the program is two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty-six cents. The expense of two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty-six cents would be incurred by TID number seven. City administration recommends approval of facade grant for the Beverage Mart at the amount of two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty-six cents.
I'll move for approval of the facade grant for the Beverage Mart in the amount of two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty-six cents.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding a work order from Baxter and Woodman for Development Assistance Engineering Services.
Uh, this work order is for two thousand and twenty-five. It's similar to two thousand and twenty-four in that it's, um, for engineering services related to project developments or private developments in the city of Milton. The work includes engineering planning, uh, plan review, um, construction services for projects with developments that are requested, um, by the city and for which a specific work order is not prepared. Fees for the services are based on engineer's standard hourly billing rates for actual work time performed plus any reimbursement for out-of-pocket expenses. Uh, most of the development-related charges are reimbursed through development agreements or funded through TIF districts. And other miscellaneous fees will be funded by accounts associated with the work requested. Uh, staff is, uh, recommending approval of a work order for two thousand and twenty-five Development Assistance Engineering and Construction Services.
Questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the work order for two thousand and twenty-five Development Assistance Engineering and Construction Services.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding a winter maintenance contract with Rock County Department of Public Works for snow removal along Vicarman Road. Oh, discussion and possible action regarding, oh, okay, another Baxter and Woodman. General Engineering Consulting Services.
So this is for engineering work for the city, uh, that would not be reimbursed. This would be for work, um, for engineering work that is not related to projects where a work order has been, uh, prepared, uh, specifically related to a larger project. Um, again, the charges are the standard hourly billing rates plus out-of-pocket expenses. City administration recommends approving the work order for two thousand and twenty-five City Engineering Services.
Is there a motion? Is there questions, comments?
I move to a motion to approve the work order prepared by Baxter and Woodman for two thousand and twenty-five City Engineering Services. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding a winter ma- winter maintenance contract with Rock County Department of Public Works for snow removal along Vicarman Road.
So when the city acquired Vicarman Road, uh, through annexation and the, um, agreement with the town of Lima, uh, we, we now have to perform snow removal services. Previously, the Rock County has been providing those services for the town of Lima, and they also performed those services for the city of Milton last year through a, uh, local road maintenance contract. Very small charge to do that work. It's four hundred and seventy dollars. City administration recommends approving the Rock County Local Road Maintenance Contract for two thousand and twenty-five.
Questions, comments?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action declaring Public Works and Utility Items as surplus.
Council Policy Five requires, uh, approval of the common council for any item that with a projected value of over two thousand dollars to be declared surplus. Uh, currently, staff is asking to, uh, declare surplus the twenty sixteen, a twenty sixteen Ford Explorer and a Skidsteer trailer. Uh, the Ford Explorer is no longer needed and has been replaced, um, through acquisition of new police vehicles, and the trailer, uh, is not used any longer and was replaced by a unit purchased in two thousand and eighteen. Upon sale of the items, the revenue received would be returned to the general fund. So staff is requesting a motion to authorize the use of Wisconsin Surplus Auction, uh, to dispose of the listed items.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize staff to use Wisconsin Surplus Auction process for the listed items.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? General items? Committee reports. Oh, by the way, Linda's on her way to Arizona for her son to get married. I wanted a Linda Clark update on her general items. Totally appropriate. Committee reports.
Historic preservation's hoping, gonna meet next week.
Okay. Anybody else meet? Parks and Rec?
Parks and Rec met on Monday, yesterday. Uh, discussed a couple items, uh, the tennis courts here, um, some working possibly with the YMCA on, uh, some land acquisition for the YMCA, but we're still in the midst of discussing that. Mark did unveil the tree, uh, interactive tree GIS map, um, from the results of the, uh, park, uh, tree funding that we received. Um, that is on our website. I encourage you all to look at it and play with it. It's pretty neat. Um, it identifies every publicly owned tree that the city owns. Um, approximately four thousand trees, I believe it is, three thousand trees?
I think it was around twenty-five hundred, but I don't.
It was twenty-nine or thirty-nine. But regardless, take a look. It's, uh, it's nice to have, and, uh, this was, uh, done with grant money and the intern that we hired over the summer, so.
Nice. So our next team building will be to identify all the trees and where they're located in the city of Milton.
Leaf collection is completed. We're, uh, doing a final sweeping, street sweeping for the city. Uh, the well building rehab project is underway now. Uh, well sticks is going to be hopefully completed and back online in, uh, middle of December or late December. gonna be hopefully completed and back online in, uh, middle of December or late December, and then the contractor will move over to well five. Um, and other than that, the, the tree inventory is pretty neat. That, that, something I would recommend checking out.
Thanks, Kelsey.
Now that we have a budget, I'll start working through tax bills. Hopefully have those out within the next couple of weeks and then just working on our police recruitment, but I won't spoil anything in case the chief has more to say on that.
So in treeing, chief or library?
We have our Friends of the Milton Public Library Book Sale going on right now. Goes through the end of the month. And then last night, the Milton Youth Coalition hosted a screening of Screenager, Screenage, Screenagers? I cannot say it. Um, about, um, the influence of, on techno, of technology on youth decision-making concerning like alcohol, vaping, and nicotine. So we had about sixteen participants watch that movie.
And were there, those parents and kids or kids?
Both, parents and kids. Yep, some great information on how to guide your youth, um, through technology these days.
Thanks for the intro, Kelsey. I hope I don't disappoint. Um, as previously prefaced, it was a really short hiring window. It ends tomorrow at midnight. Um, the number of applicants are kind of what's expected for that short timeframe. However, there are still some viable candidates in, at least initially, prior to any testing or interviews. So that's good. So on Monday, we'll start with testing and interviews, kick it off to Police Commission the following week for interviews, and then a very quick turnaround with backgrounds to get that, if this, uh, if the individual needs the academy, it'll be rushed. If it's not, it's not a big deal. If it's a lateral, already has experience in law enforcement within the state of Wisconsin, should be pretty quick then. Um, other events, we have, um, new development, we're, I shouldn't say new development, but, um, just invited to participate at Piggly Wiggly with the Stuff the Squad event, um, Tuesday the twenty-sixth. I haven't made anything public yet with it, cause I was still waiting for some times, but it's tentatively ten to one. So I'll be there and possibly some other officers trying to gather some donations for the Milton Food Pantry. Um, and then in December, um, we will have, um, the, well, we have the, um, we'll have a tabletop exercise, um, with Ivana Corporation. Um, so that'll be, um, it was on Chief Pickering's handout. Um, I think Paul's gonna participate in that too. It's a big event to kind of get everybody, um, city leadership, other members of the community together to address some potential concerns and how we can come together if some large-scale event does occur within our city or with the neighboring jurisdictions where we'll need to assist. Um, then we have, uh, again Craig, uh, Quarters Recruitment Graduation, um, from the academy on December sixth, and then the Lighted Christmas Parade on the seventh. Ready for that? And then Shop With a Cop is the week after that. So a busy couple of weeks for community-wide events for the PD. And then I'll ship shape.
Thanks. Jenny?
Just a quick reminder that local candidate nomination papers ready to be picked up at City Hall are available on our website, or I can email them also. Um, and they first date to circulate is December first, and the deadline to submit is January seventh of two thousand and twenty-five.
Paul?
Working on some new developments. Um, been in touch with a new business. Um, I think they might not be a fit for us, but still working on that. Um, I did promise you our strategic plan before we passed our budget. Unfortunately, I did not make that deadline. Uh, you have seen, um, all the pieces of the strategic plan and you've, I've sent those out to you. Um, still trying to put them together as one package. Uh, I expect that for your review next meeting.
Thank you very much. Anything else for anyone? Y'all got your November dates? Okay, I just have to find it now. My tape, I'm in it.
Oh, you weren't here.
I mean, confessions, again, confessions. Okay, November first, eighteen hundred. Who's got that? Not an IQ test, or a history test. What happened on that date?
I was supposed to tell you what happened on that date.
Yeah.
First president to live in the White House.
And who wasn't, who wasn't? November first, eighteen hundred, John Adams becomes the first president to live in the White House. All right, we'll take, we'll go with that too.
I'm gonna verify that.
November second, nineteen thirty-six.
Mine.
Go. The world's first regular public television service launched. This is a game you can play at Thanksgiving with your family too. November third, nineteen fifty-seven. Yeah?
I, I'm not gonna say, cause I can see.
Sputnik it is. Launched into space with what on board?
A dog.
Oh, that's right, you're so smart.
Well, I mean, I knew, I will say.
Sputnik two.
I will say, I didn't know that. I didn't not know the date that it happened, as soon as it said sputnik. I didn't know that. There's a very big question.
Okay. November fifth, sixteen oh five. Now, I, I think Ryan should know this one.
Sixteen oh five?
You know, that was your time.
Remember, remember the fifth of November.
Something that, uh, gunpowder plot?
Yes, the gunpowder plot. See, Guy Fawkes.
He said, you know, remember the fifth of November.
Atoms gunpowder plot. The plan, which has become known as the gunpowder plot, saw the group attempt to blow up the Palace of Westminster, Westminster in London, England. The group planned to put their plot into action during the state opening of Parliament. Luckily, they were discovered and arrested before anyone was hurt. November eighth, eighteen ninety-five. See, I think our attorney knows. He's very smug over there. X-rays were discovered. November tenth, seventeen seventy-five, Eric has to enter.
It's a give me. Rinkor birthday.
That's a Rinkor birthday. It is.
Created in a bar.
That's another ton tavern. Was that your date?
That's my date too, in November.
That's true too. That, that's true too. It is acceptable.
Next one today, the mission chose is World War One.
November eleventh, nineteen eighteen.
Yep, Veterans Day as well, my wife's birthday for that matter.
And? And what else happened on?
Veterans Day, World War One ending.
Yep, that's it.
So that said first was World War One ending, yeah.
I didn't hear the ending part. November twenty-second, nineteen sixty-three. Kennedy. Kennedy assassination, yep. Yep, November twenty-sixth, eighteen sixty-three.
November's Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Yep, exactly.
Yeah, yeah. Following Lincoln's proclamation. November twenty-sixth, nineteen twenty-two. Anybody here of Steve Martin?
Yeah.
King Tut. Yeah, King Tut, the tomb of King Tut was discovered. Yeah. That's all I have. That's all I have. I know, that's all I have. Hey, I am trying to be relatable here. Am I dating myself? Is that what you're saying? Okay, okay, what else? That's it. That's it. Next meeting date is?
Well, wait, I have something.
Oh, Teresa has something.
And I.
Do it, you do.
I use that intelligence to help you with your Thanksgiving when you're trying to make your turkey and you screw it up. And so I'm giving you this to help you run. Don't screw it up.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. You can use a, you know, you never know when you might need an AI package.
Anytime I see A1, I will think.
I'm not gonna be able to keep them straight now. I didn't even know you could get these. Another confession, another confession.
No confessions.
I didn't, I didn't think I did that. I just said, good job, Teresa.
We didn't say you did it either. Our next meeting of confessions will be December third, two thousand and twenty-four. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move second.
All those in favor? We're adjourned, bye.